I guess that's timely and sad and poignant at the same time. The, uh, the, the main band or the lead band is actually a Tom Petty cover band. Um, The Harvest Hayride is on Saturday, October 21st at Matheson Park from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And I believe the haunted hayride portion is the last hour and a half. So from 6:00 to 7:00, it's just a hayride and then the last hour and a half is, uh, haunted, which is not too scary. Uh, Halloween Parade is on Sunday, October 29th at 3:15 PM. Lineup is at 3:00 PM at Mackin's Session Church Parking Lot. The Peter Oley Turkey Trot is on Sunday, November 19th at 1:30 PM at the Dowslane School. School Board Recognition Week is October 23rd through the 27th. We'll be presenting the school board, uh, with a proclamation. Uh, then we have a check over $25,000. Actually have two of them. Uh, the first one was for $92,220 and that was for the purchase of a new DPW vehicle from Van Bordel Ford, uh, I believe, a new dump truck.
Dump truck.
And the other one is for Han Engineering, which is, uh, engineering work on the station room in Culver and Aquadec Crossing. And that was a total of $31,578.35. Those are the only announcements I have. Anyone else?
No, just don't miss that. It'll be great. It'll be fun.
It is a fun day. It is a fun day. Correspondence, um, actually a lot of the correspondence deals with the public hearing. So, other than Earl's, I'm gonna, um, kinda save the other letters for the public hearing. But, uh, Earl Ferguson writes, um, "As you're probably already aware, the Village of Irvington Historic District Committee and Stephen Tilley Associates have received an award from the Greater Hudson Heritage Network's Awards for Excellence for the Irvington Historic District Design Guide and Recommendations. This program recognizes and commends exceptional efforts among GHHN members. Awards are made to projects that exemplify creativity and professional vision resulting in contribution to the preservation, interpretation of historic scene, material culture, and diversity of the region. Your nomination exemplifies this spirit. Please see the link below for more information. Um, I, the Irvington Historic District Committee members are grateful to Mayor, the Board of Trustees, and you for the opportunity to celebrate all historic efforts and your support. Congratulations." Um, so this is a, this is a very prestigious award, um, and it's, it's nice to have some outside bodies, um, sing the praises of our Historic District Committee. Uh, I mean, I think anyone who's looked at that document, uh, has not only pride but admiration for the hard work that they did. Um, Steve Tilley's office did a great job. They went above and beyond what, I mean, the swell amount that we paid them to do it. Um, and there's a lot of volunteer work behind as well. So this is a great award and the county are gonna attend.
I'm gonna go, yeah.
Excellent.
And Brian, how do people get a, get to see a PDF of the document?
Of, uh...
Of the award?
Of the actual document.
It's on, it's on the Village website.
Yeah.
Okay, just generally...
Go and search on the Village website for the Historic District Guidelines and Recommendations. Public comments, not related to public hearings? Please.
Hi, my name's Joel Berry. I had written a letter that was read two weeks ago, but I, I was a few minutes late, so I missed it regarding, um, uh, emissions from wood-fired stoves proposing a law similar to what New York City has, um, requiring emissions filters. Uh, I actually looked at the zoning, uh, for Irvington and apparently, uh, that's already in place. Uh, 224, I could be wrong about this, but says 224 zoning, Article 9. Section 224, 36 states, uh, following usage shall be prohibited, and I quote, "Any use which is noxious or offensive by reason of emission of odor, dust, noise, smoke, gas, fumes, or radiation, or which presents a hazard to public health or safety." And there's, um, similar language for the waterfront and railroad districts. Um, I've, I've written a letter to the proprietor establishment in question, um, but I haven't received a response. Uh, so I guess my comment is that I would hope that law would be enforced somehow. Again, nobody has to reinvent the wheel here. New York City, um, has extensive, uh, language regarding this issue. I can only, I have a lot of sympathy for what it must take to run a small business food service establishment, um, in the New York metro area. It's gotta be tough, but, you know, there are a lot of infants and children, including my two-year-old daughter. I'd happily invite any of the board members over to our apartment to, um, during the hours that this, this stove is running. Um, I grew up with asthma. It's, it's not fun and the science is relatively settled on particulate emissions, um, being directly, having a causative, um, relationship towards asthma, infant mortality, all, all kinds of health problems. So if that section of the zoning code does not address restaurants for some reasons, there's some kind of carve-out, which I didn't see, um, I just think it'd be a good idea to put a law in place, but it looks like the law's already there. So just bringing that to the board's attention.
Thank you, Earl. Any other poll comment?
Good evening, Bettina Spire, 100 Arsdale Avenue West. Uh, with the increased activity coming out of Nui, the historic home, I was wondering if we could maybe have a sign that would indicate to the traffic coming out from the driveway when they have events that it's a one-way street. Um, we have one-way arrows coming out of Hudson House. I think there's some at the bottom of the hill, which nobody seems to see. Um, but if we could have some coming out of Nui, it might be, I called the police department and they told me they could only enforce the law, but I had to mention it to you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Your poll comment? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have questions on the consent agenda? Was I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda? All favor? Okay. Um, next I will make a motion to open a public hearing, consider a local law modifying zoning near the Arsdale Hudson Train Station. Can I have a second? All favor? Aye. So Mary Ann, did you wanna lead us out on this, or, I mean, have we just gotten so much additional information in the last, uh...
Yeah, I think people are familiar with the, um...
So we've had, I think, uh, we've had one working, work session on this and then we discussed it at another meeting, I believe, as well?
Yeah, we did. I mean, essentially what it does is it was pointed out by the, um, uh, I guess, um, of Paul and the, um, Hudson House residents, it was drafted pretty much to New York, what's in the, um, train station, uh, down at the Indian Street. And, uh, I think a lot of the comments related to this, so. There was, I mean, is there anything else I need to, to go through on it? I mean...
I don't think so. I mean, I, I mean, the more is, uh, the bigger issues almost that we've got, kind of significant, uh...
Comments.
Comments in the last, you know, eight hours or so. I haven't actually read the APoA, the APoA article. Um, I was actually in a meeting...
Yeah, the APoA, they largely agree with the, with the Hudson House, um, redraft. I, I just also just thought, um, I was in a meeting before class, and you mentioned this before, but, uh, the, the suggestions, you know, make a lot of sense.
I mean, I guess I'd like to also hear from John Michael De Niro, that, uh, the, the changes, if you've seen them, what he thinks of them. My understanding was that APoA, Hudson House, and, and the applicant have been kinda working together on this. Uh, so, you know, I, I, if you guys are all on the same page, um, there's obviously a chance that we change the law if we accept it as they, as they propose, so we have to notice it again, but, um...
Yeah, yeah, it's quite different.
But, you know, I, it seems that, that the two, the two bodies are on the same page and, and, you know, is, is the third one also on the same page? I guess is the, uh, is the big question tonight, you know, is... 'Cause it, you know, I think his lease is, you know, a hundred years or something, or more than that. Um, so, you know, he's gonna be the main applicant that's gonna be affected by this. So I don't know if you wanna kinda weigh in. I, we've kinda heard from APoA and from, uh...
Yeah, I, I just received this a little while ago in the email, so I really didn't get a chance to fully review it. I just wanted to hear the public comments tonight.
Sure.
And, uh, I was hoping that, based on that, maybe I could go to another work session. Because some of the, some of the issues that they're, they're commenting on are addressed in my lease already, as far as, uh, you know, the historic, uh, nature of the building and things like that. So, um, I'm already held to a standard by the MTA. So I don't, I don't need to have a double, you know, two standards to be held by, you know? And like I said, I'd like to review it some more, but I'd like to hear some public comments.
Sure. Well, definitely, I don't know if our board wants to say anything before we open up to the public, and we have three letters, um, from Peter Sandberg and Robert Goodman, from T S Wire, and David Titus. So, um, if they're here or not, if they're not, I can read their letters.
I guess one of the questions I have is how much, some of the stuff that's in the Hudson House letter, uh, suggestions, I'm not, I don't know how capable I am with, you know, putting secondary sign code language into restrictions, uh, that are already pretty destructive for these buildings. Um, it seems like it's not necessarily necessary, but, uh, and I think we would have to, the other area that I think we'd have to discuss in more detail is the one that appears potentially, um, problematic as to future uses, the, uh, limitations on, you can have food service, but it can't, it can't be on a preparation, uh, on site. So I think that's something we have to talk through, what that really implies, and, uh...
Could you make a suggestion, since, um, not everybody on the board, um, has had a chance to review the suggestions, that we get the public comment and have us all literally on the same page?
Sure.
When we have a full discussion?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, honestly, we have a, a, a public hearing schedule, so we definitely wanna hear some public input as we can tonight, uh, before we go back and kinda digest, um, you know, there's a, there's a lot, definitely a lot of changes for sure.
So knowing that we're not going to end the public hearing, we can digest all this and the public can speak and then we can continue this. That would be what I would be...
Exactly. So who would like to, uh, to start the public dialogue?
Good evening, Sue Greenfield of Hudson House. Thank you to the mayor and the board for having us here today. How many people would hear from Hudson House? It's a topic near and dear to our hearts. Hudson House is an 82-unit co-op and is the only building within 500 feet of the Arsdale on Hudson Train Station and thereby the party mostly affected by any proposed rezoning. The Arsdale on Hudson Train Station was designed by the eminent firm of Droberg and Livingston, Livingston of New York, and constructed in the 1890s as part of the original Arsdale Club. The grand clubhouse fell victim to the depression, but the station and the stables remain. Hudson House apartment building is situated on the former Arsdale Club, where that once stood. And from the start, there was a covered bridge that connected Hudson House into the second story of the station. That was knocked down in 2010. Hudson House was quite literally connected to the station building since 1937, and we remain completely connected to the historic presence in our lives. We do support the success of Mr. Di Gennaro, and we do want him to succeed while also preserving our residential area and in keeping within the guidelines of our concerns. The primary concerns that we have going forward are increasing traffic, parking, excess noise, garbage handling, level and type of activity, views, and signage. In closing, I would like to provide an open invitation to come over to Hudson House and station, to the train station, take a tour with any of us. We'd be glad to have you. Thank you.
My name is George Schifridicker. I'm also a resident of Hudson House and I was involved in putting together the letter and the comments. Um, I think we tried to be very thorough and complete in our letter to you and, um, our attached comments to the draft zoning, so what I'd like to just do is highlight a few of the things that are in there, um, and perhaps just respond specifically to some of the comments I've already heard. Uh, in, in the letter and the comments, we addressed four main topics, uh, history and preservation, uses, um, the zoning form, and parking. And if I can go back through those and highlight a few specifics about those, it would be useful, I think. We believe that the, the station is a truly remarkable historic artifact and that its preservation is very critical, um, to the town and obviously to us. We think that allowing for its adaptive reuse, um, is critical to giving it an in, income stream, and that is for the express purpose of ensuring its restoration and preservation. And so we think it is very important that there's a mechanism in the zoning that will assure that the preservation and restoration happen. Um, and that's something that we've tried to focus in on, and, and our suggestion is that, um, with a special permit application, um, there is an accompanying restoration and renovation plan that with any successive special permit application can be reviewed again and updated, and that it has some time limits attached to it and some, um, mandatory criteria. We also suggest that that, um, particular restoration and, uh, preservation plan might undergo further review by the Architectural Review Board, because in many ways, it's not simply about site plan, it's also about aesthetics, and that in particular, I think, uh, is, has relevance for the Architectural Review Board. Um, we're very concerned about the prospective uses. Uh, this is a sea change for our area. You know, the station has been a station for a very long time and nothing else has been there. Um, we think that they, the uses need to be of a very low impact, not overly trafficked, not noisy after-hours, no much as fumes, um, not requiring substantial parking needs, et cetera, et cetera. And we list those in there and we tried to make some suggestions as to how, um, the uses may be limited further from what's been, uh, in the draft. We especially focus in on restaurant use, and I think that the word restaurant is somehow far too broad for what we would have there. Um, I think that a cafe or a very limited restaurant use is much more appropriate. You can't have something that has cooking, that promotes after-hours use, that encourages, uh, a desire to get a liquor license, that requires parking, uh, in excess of a certain amount. Um, it needs to be constrained to a certain degree. I think we're also very concerned with a, um, preservation of, of the building itself, and the last thing we'd like to see is a kind of, um, ventilation duct that's required of any restaurant, uh, coming out of the middle of the roof scape, uh, just as you see in the Dobbs Ferry Railroad Station. We strongly advocate for no alcoholic beverages, uh, on premises. We think that that's, um, should simply be a, a non-starter for us. In terms of the form of the zoning and the special permit, I think that the, um, fact that the draft has put the Arsdale on Hudson Train Station into a very specific subsection is a very appropriate form for this to take. Um, it's modeled after the Irvington Train Station section. Um, however, I think it's very, very important to understand that it couldn't be more different from the Irvington Train Station in terms of the context, in terms of the overall feel of the area that it sits in, um, and for, for many other reasons that hopefully we've made clear in our text. Um, again, as Sue mentioned just now, we urge you to come and visit, and as someone who we were talking to, I was talking to just before we got in here, mentioned, you really should come at two times. You should come during the weekday and around noon, and you should come on a Saturday, um, at about the same time, because you'll experience two very, very different feels. You'll see a very crowded parking area, uh, during the weekday, and you'll see a completely quiet area on a weekend. We think it's very appropriate that the special permit process be, uh, used to vet any, uh, application, and we appreciate the fact that that's part of the zoning. In the cafe, in the case of a cafe, for instance, which, um, I think most of us think is a good idea, but that's not everyone, uh, and there's quite a bit of, uh, concern for anything that has to do with food service. I think that, uh, a special permit process and the application that has to go through a special permit process will obviously give us, um, an opportunity to comment one, once more on the very specifics of any, uh, uh, application for a building permit that comes up for review. We think that, um, the planning board has the option to, uh, require a periodic review of any special permit application. Um, we suggest that this provision be made mandatory. Um, we think that, uh, one of the things that's happening here is that this is a completely new use. There has never been a history of a commercial use in this area. And although we think that it is appropriate and the likely best opportunity for this particular building to be restored and to be preserved, we are very wary of it, and the notion of an enforced trial period, um, which is what a mandatory periodic review would entail, is a good idea for any prospective special permit application. Parking, um, I think parking is a very suitable limitation on the size of any use. I think it would be a good idea, again, if you came and visited, we could show you where the likely parking would be. It seems to fit in a pretty decent spot, but it's going to be limited to a certain number of spaces. It's important to understand that the parking in that area is overstressed, that commuters, um, are always clamoring for more spaces. Hudson House has a limited number of spaces and, uh, takes on, um, some of the overburden with its garage personnel. So the parking has to be onsite for a specific use. Um, I'm glad to hear that you intend to keep the, the special, uh, this, this hearing open, because I think that that is important. Our comments have come to you this morning. Um, it's a result of having met with all our residents, and that process takes a bit of time. I think some of our residents might very well have additional comments and thoughts that have not yet been able to be articulated. Appreciate the fact that the special permit hearing would be kept open. Thank you very much.
Hey, I'll sign a speech. Please.
Do you want to go first?
Sure, you go ahead.
Do I have to state my name again? Um, thank you very much for having this public hearing. Um, you all remember the girl on the train, the filming at the train station, and the temporary portico which was erected? And I believe some of the, um, members or residents of Hudson House, I think, lobbied with the village to, um, make this a more permanent, um, fixture. My understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong, uh, was at some point the village said that they might maintain that portico, and I, since having been on the planning board in Dobbs Ferry for years, I know that it takes a while for laws to be, um, enforced. I was hoping that maybe a coat of paint could be put or making sure that the portico is, um, safe. Needless to say, the train station or the building itself really needs some tender loving care, whatever the outcome of the, um, modification of the law is. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jim Lydon. I'm also a Hudson House resident, and, uh, I have a long background in commercial real estate, built a number of office buildings and retail spaces. The thing that troubles me, I think maybe I mentioned this last time, about this situation, is that, um, first of all, the, um, the applicant mentioned that he wouldn't do anything to the outside of the building, I believe he said, until he had a tenant. My, uh, my feeling is, I've kinda just gone roughly through the numbers. We have 2,000 square feet on the first floor of that building. The post office takes two-thirds of it, and they don't pay very much rent. So you have maybe 600 feet left over. And when you take that 600 feet, I mean, just how much income can 600 feet generate in that type of location? There is space upstairs, but my point is that I really seriously doubt, with the post office where it's located now, it basically bifurcates the space, and because of all the circulation around the, the post office, it takes a tremendous amount of area that you can't rent. And so I have serious doubts. He renewed the lease, and, uh, which is fine, except for the fact that, uh, at least he said he did at the last meeting, except for the fact that it limits the amount of income that could come out of that building tremendously. And I personally don't think that if you take into consideration what you have to spend inside the building to generate relatively market rents, what you have to do to the outside of the building just to kinda bring it up to, it's, it's, it's been depressed for a long time. But I think, I question the financial viability of this thing, and therefore, I think that he should be required to make some improvements to the outside of the building before he gets any occupancy permit for a tenant. I could talk about this later, but that's basically the point that I wanted to make.
Yes?
I'm Alex McLawhorn. I'm a new neighbor in Arsdale Park. I live at 47 Arsdale Avenue West. So, um, I just, one of my neighbors actually brought this meeting to my attention, and it was a little bit alarming to hear about these plans, because ever since we've moved in, uh, in July, uh, we've noticed a lot of traffic going down Arsdale Avenue West to the train station, mainly commuters. Um, most are respectful of the laws, but many are not. Uh, we brought this attention, to the attention of the police. We wrote a letter to the Traffic Calming Committee, um, my wife did, very thoughtful letter, um, you know, with some proposed ideas about traffic calming for that area. So, um, this is already an issue for us, uh, having moved into the neighborhood with two small kids, and additionally, I think the face of the neighborhood, you know, would underscore this neighborhood, um, is changing. Uh, there's a lot of new families, young families moving in. I think we're all gonna be concerned about anything that's gonna increase traffic to this area. There's a lot of foot traffic, both amongst the families, walking their children, walking their dogs in the area, as well as commuters who are not driving but rather walking to and from the train station. So, traffic is a huge concern, safety's a huge concern already, and I think that anything that would potentially increase traffic in this neighborhood, um, would be a major issue. I think before considering any change to zoning or anything, I think even like a traffic study might be appropriate beforehand, just to understand what is the current state, you know, how many folks are abiding by traffic laws, how many are not? Are there need for different, you know, different traffic calming measures in the neighborhood as it is, before you even try to adjust the zoning of the train station? Um, so again, it underscores the neighborhood, a lot of young families, I think traffic and safety are tremendous concern with anything that alters the landscape of our neighborhood.
I'm sorry, can I get your last name?
Yep. It's McLawhorn, M C, L A W H O R N.
Hi, I'm sorry to walk in late. Debra Hargreaves, uh, resident of Irvington and specifically Arsdale Park. Um, I happen to be a member of the Arsdale Park Owners Association Board, and Nicholas Moore is our fearless leader. Um, he's supposed to be here, I think he was under the impression that this matter would not be on the agenda for probably closer to now, so he may walk in the door while I'm speaking. But I just wanted to make sure it's indicated in the record that he took the time on behalf of the APoA board to send in a letter, and it was dated today. I know it came in a couple hours. Okay, great. Is there any need for this to be read into the record, or are we fine with it just being...
No, we'll, we'll make sure it's officially entered.
Okay. And, and just for those in the audience also, um, to recognize that he did take the time, and he basically indicated in the letter that, um, we are aligned with and support with the Hudson Houses here before you today, saying, "Thank you very much."
Thank you.
I think maybe before you walked in, we discussed how we were not going to end the public hearing tonight.
Just 'cause we got so much comment, so many comments from Hudson House and, uh, and APoA.
Just because we got so much comment, so many comments from Hudson House and APOA today, so.
Thank you.
And they understandably came today, but we want to all have a chance to digest it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Sure.
Hi, my name's David Titus. I live at Hudson House. I've lived there for a dozen years. My wife and I love the area as it is. It's residential. On it, I back the board 100 percent. Okay, so, but that said, I just want to express my own personal feeling for a sec. I'm really opposed to commercialization of this area. Just opposed to it. It's not the character of the neighborhood. There must be other alternatives to maintaining the train station than turning it into a retail establishment. There have to be. You know, you guys run a town, there's property taxes. I don't know the exact revenue options. Personally, as a, as a, as your neighbor, I'm open to any of them. Commercialization too, at the limits that my board has described. But I just wanted to note, I'm not happy about it. It may be inevitable, so I hope you proceed with caution, and thank you.
And I think the one thing we're balancing here is, I mean, a lot of people want this building maintained. They want it restored. MTA owns it. They found someone who was willing to lease it. And now we can either just say, sorry, you can't use it for anything. And I don't think it's going to, you know, probably be restored out of the goodness of his heart. You know, so I think we're trying to find a compromise here. I think it was said well by, Chris said it, but that the fact that it is a very limited space already, especially if the post office stays, which I understand it is, and I know that that's an important piece of this whole thing. I was actually very happy to hear that the post office was staying, because frankly, it's the post office I use, because it's, there's never a way. But, you know, I think that, I mean, don't tell them, it's never open. But, you know, I think that that's what we're trying to figure out here, is what kind of uses we can have that make it a viable business so we can have the restoration work and the maintenance of the building while not over-commercializing it. And I think that, I mean, it took a very long time for the Irvington one, which is, everyone points out, is in a commercial district. But I think the, the, just the straight and simple math, profitability for that building was very, very difficult for people to see. I think this is also going to be difficult. You know, so I think that, you know, why I think we definitely want to put in the proper restrictions and, you know, and no inappropriate uses. I also don't think we want to be so overly restrictive that we make it, you know, an impossible thing where, you know, it's destined to fail also. Because, you know, I mean, if someone else wants to take over the lease and just pay for it out of the good of their heart, you know, I don't think that's necessarily a viable thing either. So I think we have to kind of balance those two things. And I don't, I don't see it being a big traffic generator if we do it right, because so many people are already down there ready, you know. And if they had 14 parking spots, I can't see people, A, it's, you know, whether, even if, you know, if they, even if they cruise through the stop sign, it still takes a while to go down and round it up. It's not an easy right off the highway kind of place to hit for your, you know, your cup of coffee. Yeah, so I think that we could, again, I think if we do this right, it could be a big thing for the neighborhood without making it commercial. It would probably be almost a, you almost wouldn't know it was there, except if you, almost like the post office, if you didn't know it was there, you don't know it's there. So I'm hopeful that we can, we can strike that big, that great balance. I think one great advantage we have here is we have a very active group at Hudson House and APOA who will, you know, help steer this conversation. You know, often, our biggest issue is that we have these public meetings, and we have one person show up that was here for something else, and that's the only opinion we get. So I think that we're way ahead of the game because we have so many people that are so interested in this issue. We realize it's critical to get this right. But I think it's also critical to the neighborhood to keep that building viable and functioning. You know, I think that, I think it's such a unique place. You know, I think it's, it's pretty cool that it's also hidden and not a lot of people know about it. That was one of the things I was worried about with the girl on the train, was that suddenly you're going to have, you know, people taking pictures down there. But it's, so far that hasn't been realized. I still, people don't, they think it's fake. You know, so I think we have a lot of work to do. We have, there's a lot of comments to that. But we're still open to your comments. And sometimes it's the small comments, like, I don't know if I want to send an email. We think they're all helpful. You know, so we always welcome more opinion. And even if you're like, you know what, maybe someone said this already? Send it to us anyway. We're always happy to get more emails than us on these issues. And we're not going to rush to a decision. Why not do what the applicant's happy to hear? But, you know, we want to make sure we get this right. And I think, you know, to his credit, he's been, he's wanted to be a good neighbor, and he's been working with all of you. So, you know, to me, that makes our job easier as well, because I think we can find the best compromise for all the parties involved. Including the village, which, you know, we want this to be a great area. If it is a great area, we want to keep it that way. But I think having that railroad station there, I think having the post office there, and potentially, you know, something else can actually add to your quality of life rather than detracting from it. I will say on the, on the speeding and things, it has been a focus for our police department. I know they have ticketed a bunch of people. I know since we put in that stop sign, it's helped a lot. And we've enforced that stop sign. You know, so I, now we have a traffic person that's only on traffic, and we'll make sure that they're going to be on that road some of the time. Obviously, Main Street is a big, big issue, especially with the station road closed. But that's going to be on the regular rotation for the police department as well, because it is the other commuter place where, you know, you have six minutes to get to the train, you have only four minutes to get there. You know, so I think that that's, you know, we see the same, same issues on Main Street to a lesser extent, but we see the same issues over there. And we're definitely aware of it, and our traffic officer is definitely aware of it as well.
May I just make a comment about the traffic and the stop sign?
Sure.
I'm Roberta Goodman, I live at Hudson House. The stop sign just before the post office, it's stop signal. At 6:00 in the morning, people are blowing through that stop sign. So they, there may be enforcement in the area, but it's not at the right time. So they really need to come down when people are trying to make that train.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other public comment? So is it?
Oh, yeah, Deb took care of it. Sorry, we were too quick, we were too, we were too efficient tonight. So we're just going to keep it open, I guess? Or we're actually going to have to change this, I mean?
We're going to change, we may as well keep it open.
We keep it open.
But a new draft will have to be renoted.
Yeah, it's going to be renoted.
I think there needs to be some discussion.
Yeah, and there's going to be a, probably, if I had to guess, the timing, we're going to have to have a work session on it to discuss the changes, because they're fairly large, and then we have another public hearing, so.
If you wanted to take up the tour idea, who would you be in touch with? Sue Greenfield?
And if anyone has not signed up for our email blasts, it's the easiest way to stay informed. So if you're not, they should go to our website and sign up, it's pretty easy. Please.
So can I assume that the procedure is going to be, you will put out a new draft? There'll be a work session and then a public hearing?
There'll be a work, I think it makes sense to have a work session before we do a new draft. We did have a work session on this before, and I understand that better lately than ever. And I'm sure the board would have been very open to all these comments before. But I think, having heard you tonight, I think there should be another work session before there's another draft.
Great, okay.
And I think, again, because you guys are well organized, we can make sure Larry gets, you know, both Hudson House's board as well as APOA's board, a copy of the draft, as far as it's available. It'll be on the website as well, but just to make sure.
Any other comments on this? Okay.
Let's just keep the public hearing open. Thank you all for your comments.
There's contact.
That's it.
Okay.
The next item is a continuation of the public hearing to consider a local amendment of the parking regulations in the village's downtown area. As it says on the agenda, this is really just kind of more of a listening exercise. I think this is the, it's the fourth?
The third.
All right, I think August. I think it's the third public hearing we've had on it. We anticipated getting, getting, receiving a lot of comments on the parking as well. We haven't been disappointed. You know, I think, so we're still, we still want to hear more input, but then we're probably going to do is likely close the public hearing and then reopen it when we have a revised draft based on all the comments. But we're wide open for comments tonight on parking.
How are you, Agavino? I love Jeffy Park. I'm here because I received a letter from Larry asking to complete a survey if, if, the survey asks if you are in favor of allowing overnight parking at Jeffy Park. I received that letter, I believe it was Friday. Got it in the mail. I wrote Larry today, and we exchanged emails, and then I forwarded it to you. And your email says that this is the third public hearing, and you'll be closing the public hearing and then reopen for revised legislation. But now you just said that you're going to continue to have this, the public hearing open?
Well, we're going to, it's just almost a technicality where it's going to actually close it then reopen it, but we're going to have, I'd say, at least several more public hearings on the parking.
I, I, the reason why I ask is because I don't know if all the Irvington, the Jeffy Park residents have responded.
They probably haven't, but we're, there's plenty of time. It's going to be months before this is done, so.
Okay. Because I, I gave Larry my comments, and he wrote back, and I'm just, I'd like to have the survey revised so that the person filling out the survey can put, that put in the survey that they live in Jeffy Park, because Larry said that they let, only went to Jeffy Park residents and wanted to hear from the Jeffy Park residents, and that it was because, the reason why the survey went out was because people in Jeffy Park were parking on South Fares and wanted to know if residents in Jeffy Park wanted us to allow overnight parking. I have a problem with overnight parking in Jeffy Park for various reasons, and I'd like to speak, speak about it at another hearing. I ran over here when I got your email.
Sure.
I have to, I have to drive my daughter back to college tonight.
Okay.
She's actually waiting.
We won't hold you up. You have plenty more time to speak, I promise.
I just want to make sure that I can.
You're not going to miss it, I promise.
And so that's all.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah. You won't miss it. Anyone else want to talk about parking regulations in the downtown? It's a hot topic. All right, so I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
To continue. The next is a review of an offer of dedication for a road off Arslay Avenue West, AKA Pat Weefling. Larry kind of, I kind of forgot where we were in this whole process. But, and then I forgot who are, who are, who the people that were still here after we were done with Hudson House. But then it did eventually click. But you're kind of in the neighborhood anyway. But, so Larry, do you want to maybe just walk through what we're doing tonight, and then what other potential steps would be? If that's not helpful, let me explain it to me.
Actually, I had it explained from, by Mary Ann, so.
It's a beautiful conversation. All right, we think they got us to break things out at noon when I've got it, I have it there, so.
So obviously, we met over a period of time with the residents who have asked for this board to consider a dedication of the road that they live on. I won't even use the name that we've been calling it. So we had our engineer review the condition of the roadway, some of the facilities. Fire department took a look, DPW has taken a look, and we did come back to the board with some comments and concerns that were, virtually at the same time, passed along to the residents. They've responded to those concerns and incorporated that responsiveness into their offer of dedication. My understanding is that, is that tonight, we would like to have an indication from a board, from the board as to whether you would like to go forward with this. It's as simple as a straw poll of some sort, so I know whether to work on this or not, frankly. At the next meeting, if the board is interested in moving forward, at the next meeting, we would accept the offer of dedication and set a public hearing, I believe, was the, was, is, are the formal steps. So that would be at the meeting of October 16th, that you would accept the offer of dedication and then call for a public hearing. The public hearing would then be held, whatever the first Monday is in November, at that meeting. You would then hold that public hearing, listen to the comments that you hear about the potential acceptance, and then close the public hearing, and then decide whether to formally accept dedication or not. Did I do okay?
That's what I remember as well from that.
So Larry, were there any issues that were brought up? Were there any issues that were brought up by any of DPW or anyone on our end that have not been agreed to by the residents in their, in this number? No.
My question was, is the signed and notarized documentation is with the village attorney? So is this something you haven't looked at? This is something new, or is something new documentation or old? This is the letter from them that referenced that.
I'm not sure if you saw the letter of that.
It doesn't matter, because all they need to do is make their offer a dedication.
Okay.
Right, Mary Ann's, just so you know, Mary Ann's involvement, I mean, other than guiding us on things, but Mary Ann's involvement was really being on top of making sure that they had their ownership situation taken care of. As we talked about in some various work sessions, there certainly is a question of ownership in it, and they obviously did a lot of work to straighten that out. How they straightened it out was acceptable.
Okay. Yeah. Talk us about the Pat We family, given that's a legal.
Oh, yeah, 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 that document, I got it. It's essentially a quick point D, I think.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so that's, that you can nod your head about. But all the rest of the stuff, the engineering and all that.
They own it now, yes. I said before was that they actually own it before they offered it to you, and it's been shown that they own it.
Right, because you can't offer something.
There you go. All the same age.
So it would be fair to say, I think, in this process, you discovered an unexpected wrinkle, and now that's been being cut.
Well, and then what, there were other issues. Remember when after you had the work session, there was a question about whether they wanted to, they would have to change their addresses? And they, I think you wanted to think about it, whether you wanted to change your addresses? And, and I think that was a requirement of.
Fire department was concerned, yeah.
So, so they agreed, so I forget how that came about. And then there were the various engineering issues, you know, and, and they've agreed to the ones that the board wanted them to take care of.
And, you know, I think, if you step back, I mean, I think the reason this, I mean, I get, every winter after the first snowstorm, I probably get three or four requests to take over people's roads. The difference here is that the board basically did agree to it once the construction was completed. And the construction's now been completed, and it's kind of never followed up. Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that the board technically agreed to it.
The planning board.
Like, they didn't do what, what I'm hoping you're going to do at the next meeting.
Right.
Apparently, but, but the entire subdivision was done with a public road down the center of it, is the best way I can put it. And so that's the argument that differentiates some of your other requests from this one.
Correct.
I mean, there are other requests, and there are very different situations about those requests. That, you know, you can't have a substandard road designed and built and then to never be a public road, and then after the fact, say, by the way, please plow it and take over the road. That's not going to happen.
Absolutely, and that's what I always say. But I, someone else, I think, one of the people that I've said no to, I think, every year I've been in office, basically said, oh, you're taking over this street, why not mine now? And I kind of explained that this was the original plan, it's never got completed, as opposed to, you know, just a kindness of my heart, so.
Yeah, I don't know the reasons why, but, not that you have a kind heart. I don't know the reason why it never got done. know the reason why it never got done.
I have no problem looking forward.
No, I, the only question I have, which is not, I am completely in favor of doing this, but I just would like for us to be really clear about what are the standards and the criteria for accepting road, even if, if any standard road, I mean, what, what's the benefit to the village? I think we have to be clear going forward. You went through a long and torturous process.
There's no benefit to the village, I think.
I'm sorry?
I mean, I don't see any benefit to the village, I mean, we're taking additional meetings and the clearing, so, you know, to me, there's, you know, again, it's not just because it'd be nice to do it for a neighborhood, it's really, if we, the only way that I, that I think I would even consider is if we, you know, there was evidence that it was the plan and it was kind of discussed at the time.
Which it was. Which it was.
Which is fair. And to me, it's fair that if, you know, you told them, hey, we'll take it over, or, you know, that was, that was implied by the whole process and then you just said, yeah, and forget it. To me, that's literally the only, even if someone said, I'll make the nicest road in the history of roads, to me, I still wouldn't want to take it over. You know, well, like, right, Nielsen designed everything, I'd still be like, no, thank you.
But we do, we do take over roads, right? With some frequency when new developments are built?
It's, I mean, it's varied over the years, but frankly, there haven't been a lot of roads built recently, so.
There's more places to build.
But it's, it's varied, you know, depends on, depends on the development.
And Legend Hollow, a lot of those are private roads.
They're all, they're all except the main roads, so, but again.
I'm not remembering the name of this, never mind. There's one offer of review, I believe.
Hugh Hill?
Yeah.
No, River, no, River View, you said, right?
I could, I could be wrong where it is.
It's off of Park Road, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and again, that's, I mean, not to go into the philosophies behind this, but the, very often, a developer will lay out a subdivision and purposely have smaller substandard roads in order to fit in more lots. And it's less land that they have to dedicate to the, to the right-of-way, so they can potentially build more. So it's a, it's a balance act between development constraint and public good and all of that, and that's, that's what the planning board does. So in a case of Legend Hollow, for example, where basically the main, the main roads there, North Brook Lane and Manor Pond Lane, are public roads, all of the little side spurs are all private and they're smaller in size and probably allowed the lots to be bigger. So it was a balancing act. And, you know, again, what we, I didn't, look, there's no one on the staff that wanted to take over a road, as Brian articulated, but what differentiated this from other examples and correspondence that you receive over the years is, is that the subdivision was designed with appropriately sized right-of-ways, so the lots are not bigger than they could have been and now we're trying to squeeze out a road out of it, you know what I mean?
But so I think that, that's the question. So if something is designed with appropriate size of the main, the major geography, so it is, this meets the standard of a public road, then generally, it could be dedicated and we would accept.
It's, there's, there's no, yeah, it's really hard, it's, look, it's really hard to say.
Everything seems to be a different situation.
Well, because you're dealing with, you're dealing with two public bodies, you know, planning board, and then developer, planning board and village board, and you're dealing with human beings and, you know, in the case of, yeah, we always get in the way, in some cases, you know, in the case of Hugh Hill Lane, that's a perfect example, they came to one board that gave them one answer and then lo and behold, later, they designed it and built it out and the new board was in the midst of the financial crisis of 2008 and they said, why in God's name would we take a road? So it's a different answer with different circumstances.
And then we correct it based not only on the size of the road, but the history. So it isn't only just the size of the road, it's all of the history.
Yeah.
Sometimes, which is kind of hard to, you know, snake out, but.
Yeah, especially it's old, yeah, very old. You know, I think that that's, to me, the history is almost more important than the build. You know, you can bring it up to spec potentially, but if you didn't have the history there, if it was never meant to be, then, you know, I don't think, we just want to kind of say, if you build it right, we'll take it over. That's not what we do. So only if the attention was there from your team.
Okay, well. So, I'm fine with this, I think it's appropriate action.
Yes, or if Larry said yes, Mark says yes.
Okay, so next, next meeting, there'll be a resolution on the agenda and then call for a public hearing and then public hearing in early November.
Who gets the name of the street?
Well, you're in charge of naming streets.
We're a trustee's ways. I'll tell Mayor Smith.
I would just.
I would, I would think you might want to offer an opportunity to the residents with the name and, you can, you can filter, you can filter the name.
That's what we were thinking too.
You were, yeah, exactly, it's definitely a final.
But they have the final, they have the final say though.
Oh, I thought it was, it was recommended that they became an Larsley Avenue extension, that was.
No, that's what they are now. Essentially, they're Larsley Avenue.
We're Larsley Avenue West, we're the same as.
Same as the ones out on.
Which is actually, yeah.
It's confusing. Well, that's where the fire, yeah, we went through this already.
I think something with a historic connection would be appropriate. I'm so shocked to hear this, isn't it?
I do have trouble with historic connections.
Given the history that you've studied.
But you can.
Very good.
Hugh Hill Lane is an example of an historic connection and I'm not sure that's the top choice for that road.
We don't, we don't want to assume that one bad choice would lead to another, speaking of the same assumption.
Was that Hughes Hill?
It sure was.
No, I suggest you come up with a name before we do the resolution, I guess.
Yes, right.
Well, at least you guys come up to the board with some suggestions and then it'll be easier to fill in the blank.
So by, by November, is that, or by October?
Why don't you, you guys, you should be able to get back to the board soon on the name.
So it's going to be at the next board meeting in November, is that?
Next board.
Oh, well, that's a resolution.
Well, what's the, October 16th, if that.
October 16th is the board meeting and then, but then the actual, then the public hearing would take place at the first meeting.
Will be a resolution saying, not accepting it, but saying essentially they're disposed to accept it and they're having a public hearing on it.
Right.
And assuming there's not a lot of objection at the November meeting, they could vote on it.
Is the name, is it part of the hearing?
It would be helpful for historical reasons.
It would be helpful, it's not necessarily, we could call it, you know, pit we wanted to be known as, but it'd be better if you could come up with a name.
Just accept and we just have it.
Otherwise, we're going to give you one, if you may.
Yeah, we'll discuss it.
It sounds like a fun like Saturday night ride.
Right, exactly.
And now you guys would have one.
And where our chest is the Jaffrey Park, people are going to end up parking on our street.
Well, that's it, overnight parking, maybe.
You know, as we hear these, you hear about Mercy's Out of Park, it's like, we're going to wake up one day and find our street is full of cars, public, you know.
Yeah. For the parties.
At the, oh. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. For being so patient.
Yes, thank you.
Their kids are grown up.
Glad you guys are still here.
And their grandchildren know.
That's a shame, for saying that.
Thanks again.
Thank you, good night.
Approval to change the estimated expenditure in 2016-17, Snow and Ice, the New York State Department of Transportation.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, this is, you just did one for a previous year.
Would you like me to read it?
We'd get more money, right?
Yes.
That looked like a good one.
To those of Irvington, the New York State Department of Transportation have entered into agreement providing for the village's removal of snow and ice from North and South Broadway. Now therefore be it resolved that due to the severity of the winter during 2016-17, the estimated expenditures revised to reflect additional lane miles and state roads that were cloud treated during the winter season as per the attached agreement and authorize Superintendent of Public Works Greg Nielsen to execute said agreement. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Felicity Pauling, like, home, we got to wipe out the stuff.
Seven thousand fifteen dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Ten of salt.
Self seems to get more expensive every year, it's crazy. Approval of revocable license to the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. This is the one that I said, I have no idea what that is, if Larry explains it in about two minutes.
Okay, I'll try to keep it under two minutes. So, the Aqueduct Parking.
See if I really understood it.
The Aqueduct Parking Lot and the War Memorials are on, what's now state property, was New York City Water Board property and the village had correctly obtained permits covering those areas and actually includes a small section of Aqueduct Lane where the parking is, from those businesses. And the state parks is now trying to clean some of those permits up, they're, they're ancient permits going back to the 50s. Nothing was really wrong with them, but now that we've made a change to the things that will be under our control, it will now include the Aqueduct Parking Lot, the war monuments, the parking on Aqueduct Lane that's right above the retaining wall, and then the pathway itself, the, the new grass pathway. So, all of that will be covered under this revocable license, which is what they want and I assume it needs to be done this way because it's technically state park land and so this is, you know, they can't alienate that. So, Mary Ann went through it in great detail. We sent comments to the state, they were very accommodating in the way they responded. The, you know, they had standard clauses in there, like anything in this, in these areas would become the property of the state if the lease, if it gets, the license gets revoked. We pointed out that that can't be the case for the monuments and they said, sure, no problem. So they modify things accordingly.
Yeah, they're thirty days notice, they could get down on thirty days notice and we've got, give us a year.
And they said, sure, yeah. So it's, little things like that, but so we're, we're satisfied with it, it cleans up, you know, some ancient history and makes it clear going forward.
It's very good to do this. I meant to ask you before, but on the map that's attached, maybe if I could, what I was trying to determine, there's a little section at the south end of that and it has the enlarged license area and it's a whole thing that says eighty feet.
Yeah.
Is that, is that to say that that section there is part of this lease, I mean, its arrangement or not?
Yeah, so the, it's, unfortunately, black and white doesn't really translate too well here, the, the actual map is in color and, and what's actually the licensed area is, is eighty feet beyond the end of the Aqueduct Parking Lot.
Oh, so it is included.
It does include that and then it includes all of the Aqueduct Parking Lot, all of the monument area, and then all of the parking on Aqueduct Lane and the pathway. So there is a red line around that that you can't really see too well, so.
So then they, so like you said, the Aqueduct Parking, is it this, that darker section on our map or does it go further?
No, the parking ends where the dark area ends. And then there's an area beyond that where we have the little new pathway and the handrails and all that's under our control.
No, I mean, on the other end.
On the other end?
Right, going, going, going north now on Aqueduct Lane, there's a darker area that stops.
Yeah, it ends where the dark area ends.
Okay, and then below that part, the grassy part, it's a shorter line, darker. So that's meant, that's what you mean by the licensed area ending there?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
I have the color map upstairs, do you want to look at it?
I'll just look at it upstairs.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's, it's accurate, I'll just, I'll just say that, it's, we went through it pretty closely.
It's very important to get it out of the New York State water into the right owner, so I'm glad this is all getting.
And the school, in case you're interested, the school has to do the same thing for their parking lot.
Right.
I believe, that the state is reaching out to them to, but that's not our issue.
It's good to update history, the current situation.
Result to revocable license to the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation for the Old Croden Aqueduct State Historic Park and authorizing the village administrator execute said agreement, I'll make a motion, can I have a second? All in favor? For support, standing committees and officers, trustee liaison reports, you're going.
I have nothing really to report tonight. I know that the traffic committee met with the police chief and Larry and the traffic enforcement officer and went through some of the initial data from the last few months and I think that was a good meeting from what I hear.
That's right, you weren't there.
It wasn't. It's going to be quarterly, right? To review, to review the data.
I think that's right.
Yep, and you all, you all received, you know, the extracts, some of the numbers, raw numbers in your Friday folder that, that week.
I'm sorry, I missed what that was about.
Did I talk too softly?
No, I actually, I was looking for a message here to report on.
The traffic committee met with the chief officer, Chris Key, who's the traffic enforcement officer, Larry.
And they, and they had some numbers.
That was a good meeting, I was having a quarterly meeting going forward.
Okay, sorry, I can't say two things at once.
There was discussion about moving the signs, making sure that we had our stuff moved around and there's also wifi or cellular, I should say, access to the sign data that is going to be available to the traffic committee so they can look at numbers themselves.
Okay.
Smart signs.
Brian was nice enough to list many of the things which are going on in October and November, I won't follow and repeat those. I will mention a number of meetings which are going on over the next week or so. The Oktoberfest committee and the face committee members will meet this Wednesday night, 6:30 at the rec center. The RPAC committee will be meeting Wednesday, October 4th at 7:00 PM at the rec center. The IASK executive board meets October 23rd at 8:00 AM. The CAB meeting is scheduled for Tuesday morning, October 17th, 8:00 AM at the senior center. Friday night open gym for 4th and 5th graders starts October 27th. There was a wonderful presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Many of us were at, and congratulations to Allison Felix, Tanya Hunt, and all the members of IASK and CAB for their community presentation last week at the, at the Town Hall Theater. That's it.
Okay, well, in my connection to the downtown business district, there's what I consider very good news, that the group that's called Rivertown Chamber of Commerce came to Irvington to see if they could get a local chamber subcommittee and although I was there for a few minutes, I, I didn't stay.
I didn't.
Okay, all right, so, like, I got in touch with Nick Campbell, who I knew was there, he's insurance on Hudson, and four business owners in Irvington stepped up to be kind of the lead in having a new chamber here. So I wanted to thank them all, Janet Kovacs is one, Nick Campbell, who I just mentioned, Michelle Letty, who is the, two bizarre places now, and Jacob from Ravine Park. So those four businesses are now taking a lead in being very needed business groups in town. And to that end, on Thursday morning, this Thursday at 7:30 down at Bazaar, there is a meeting mostly for businesses. Obviously, they'd be happy if any of us wanted to pop in and see what they're up to and they apparently have some ideas about things to do and I was in touch with them today about this, including some information that I thought maybe with Larry you could look into about how the rec department and actually us want to handle that Candy is here. Okay, because they, they want to publicize what to do about Candy and whether or not there's some, you know, money that's collected or not, so I guess we have to decide how we want to do that. Last time, the rec department took the lead, right, so.
I think they're intending to do that again, but I'll get that.
Okay, so if the rec department wants to do that and we think it's still a good idea, then I guess they can publicize it.
Yeah, that would be helpful, that's for sure.
Okay. The other, there, I had some other information about the farmer's market, which you'll find in a minute, but Greg Nielsen and Jim Englishby always give us some information, so I'd like to, since they do such a lot of work, I think it's good to read up what they're doing. So the water department is, as always, reading water meters. Oh, and the water bill, I think we mentioned this before, but I got mine today in the water bill and I hope the people who got their water bill just now realize that this little notice about our landscaper regulations was in it. And there aren't many available, so I would say to the public, hang on to the one you got, because there's not a big stack right now, so it's very useful and thank you, Mark, for all the work you did on. So they've been doing maintenance for the, the fall maintenance of the water facilities, marking manholes and shut offs on Field Point Drive prior to repaving. Replacing a fire hydrant on South Broadway, there's hydrant flushing beginning, I've seen some signs about that, I'm sure people will notice and be aware of that. Repaired a water main break on Lea. Repaired a water main break on Leafwood Terrace, installed an insertion valve at the high reservoir. Sounds like it's hard to do. Cleared a sewage stoppage on South Broadway.
Just expensive.
Sorry. I won't say what I thought about clearing the stoppage, the sewer stoppage. No comment on that one. And the Highway Department repaired a sinkhole in Catch Basin. I saw that at the corner of South Ferris and Home Place. Repaired, resurfaced damaged sections of the road on the west side of South Dearman. Assisted the Water Department with a water main break on Leafwood Terrace, and working together. Assisted the Parks Department with hauling various material, using the back haul to clean the basins and line and crosswalk painting. I've also noticed, a couple of people asked me if some of the sidewalks that are marked with white paint are being marked to repair. Do you think that's the case?
To shave down the sidewalks, yeah, to, to remove the tripping hazards.
Yes, right.
Like was done in a few places, yeah.
Right, right, so if there's the white paint there, that, that's probably on their list of fixing that. Right, that's what I thought. The farmer's market, I think, as, as you know, is still going in their outdoor market. They're very happy with this year's market, I think most of the public is too, and they did, they did say that they, they planned to have the winter market again, and I can give you specific dates. They, they do have a website that I, that you can access on the village website, but there are two links that don't work perfectly right now, but there's one link that does, so they can fix that up, and they will. But it is a beautiful website and lists all the times and dates. If, if somebody really wants me to read the times and dates, I'll, I'll look for it. Well, yeah, this is a little bird. You can find that information. And there is one change in the membership of the committee, which we'll deal with with somebody who's not able to serve anymore. Okay, I think that's it.
Is someone?
Oh, I know, the theater, wait, wait.
Hold on.
Right, theater.
Building Janice's time.
Great, great, I'm taking Janice's time. Great, great, Eric Allen. Okay, so, right now, the It's Easy program has been doing very well, selling a lot of seats for their kids program, and there are more shows coming this weekend. The group Red Molly is quite popular, there are already 250 seats sold for that performance. And the other thing to report, October will be our Film Festival, that's one of the day in, in October, and in November, we're having our first Theater Festival of new works, which will run in four different sessions over two days on the weekend. It will be very exciting for the village to have this two-day festival. So, those are readings of plays, and that's a very ambitious project, and we can report on all those specific dates in November as well. So, go, go theater, all right.
I still have nothing to report.
Yeah, I haven't thought of anything.
I have one thing to add.
Yes.
Since Janice freed up a little time, it's actually GPTF related, but, or village related, but in, in our meeting, a couple meetings ago, whatever it was, we passed the bulk pickup.
Oh, yes.
Regulation, was that last meeting?
Yes.
Anyways, I made a comment, Leola was, was talking about trying to get more information on the website about recycling, free cycling, and all sorts of things. Turns out that information is there on the website, under, under the GPTF already, but I was going to ask Larry if maybe we could get a unique, you know, easy-to-remember URL to point to that page. Something like either Go Green, Free Cycle, something, pick up, I don't have a preference, but just so that we can be able to publicize a little bit more than the, than our standard raw URL looks, yeah. It's actually pretty interesting, a lot of information, whoever collected it, I guess.
You probably did.
I didn't help, but I think Nikki and, and all, all collected it last year, and it's, it's pretty informative, but I'm hoping it's up to date.
Okay.
Village Administrator's report.
So, two quick, sort of related announcements. First of all, the Route 9 study, five-village study of Route 9 corridor, is progressing along, and it looks like they have some conceptual design plans that they would like to present to the public. When they become more finalized, I will certainly circulate it to the board, but there are two open houses that are scheduled Sunday, October 15th, 2:00 to 4:00, at Mercy College. And this information will be circulated, but the other is Thursday, October 19th, 6:00 to 8:00 at the Warner Library. So, I had a look at some of the drafts, and it's interesting, you know, I'll have to see how it all plays out. The other thing is the, I'm sorry?
I was going to say, is it anything that we didn't expect in terms of?
No, I don't think so. They still have some more work to do on the Irvington section, but.
It's the part I care about.
Yeah, exactly.
It's all connected.
Everyone else looks good. No, kidding. The other thing is, the New York State Thruway, I believe, is holding a, an open house to show the conceptual design plans for the Route 9, 119 entrance to Thruway intersection that they plan to redo, giving two turn lanes into the eastbound 287, if you know the turn in front of where the double tree is.
Oh, yes.
Beautiful new building, that's going to be the Honda.
Oh, I love it.
Yeah.
Historic.
Smart cars.
Interesting classic.
But also included in that are plans for redoing the sidewalks on the east side of Broadway, but also on the west side, a sidewalk, but then a multi-use shared path with a separate bridge across 287, so that it separates that shared use path from the rest of Broadway traffic.
Wow.
At least that's what it looked like to me, but we'll all get to find out. October 4th, I circulated, I just sent an email, actually, that had the information about it. It's October 4th from 5:00 to 8:00.
October 4th.
This Thursday.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Anyway, you have an email about it. What's up?
Village Clerk Treasurer's report. Okay. We're going to begin a major initiative of replacing some of our software programs in the Clerk Treasurer's office. So, we're getting close to making a final decision on a new water sewer billing program, so I think that's going to really enhance our communication with the public, giving a portal to the public, and giving a graph on the bill and more information, plus it's more efficient for the total office operations.
It was not too painful.
And it's called Water Dude. Or faucet Dude.
Village Treasurer's report.
Water Dude.
Public comment? Are you the Ash House?
There was just the one at the end there about the GPTF recycle, recycle URL.
I didn't have anything else.
Yeah, the rest of it were notes to myself, so.
I, I have some greenfields, if anybody else wants to do the tour besides me to the train station, I have her contact information. Is that not an action?
Keep us in the loop if you, when you're going, and maybe try to join.
Do you want to?
I'll try.
Okay.
It came out of the other GPTF meeting, was, has anyone reviewed the comments in the back of the calendar with, to give feedback to Greg?
Greg is getting a draft together, and it'll be circulated.
To, and we're going to give it to?
Everyone that wants to look at it.
Gotcha.
Is that the right answer?
Give the dead signs.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry.
She wants to yield back her time.